We're coming out of closed session. Uh, we'll move into our state auditor's office exit conference. I think we have some folks here from SAO as well as Leo Kim. Uh, our CFO for the county. Leo, do you want to get us kicked off and hand it over to SAO?
I'm sure. Uh, this is the exit conference for the state auditor's office for the financial and the single audit for the federal grants and um, I'll just let them go ahead and present.
Alrighty, well, good morning. Thanks so much for the chance for us to be here today to share the results of your audit. Um, my name is Amy Stroka and I'm the audit manager for the Port Orchard Audit Team. Um, and then with me today is Vinnie Shield, who was the supervisor on the audit, Tammy Lane, who was the audit lead, and Darcy Williams, who assisted on the audit. Um, so before we get started, we do want to note that this presentation represents a summary of the completed audit. So to supplement the presentation, we've provided a packet of information that includes full draft or full copies of the draft audit reports and some other more detailed information. So as we move through the presentation today, we'll be referencing where you can find more detailed information in your packet. So let's get started. She's trying to advance this slide.
Hold on one moment, Amy. It's giving me a bit of a technical difficulty.
There we go. All right. Well, whether you're new to the audit process or if you've been through an audit in the past, um, understanding the audit results is very important to establishing and maintaining good government. First of all, audits can help build trust in your organization by letting you know whether things are working or whether there's areas that might need some fine tuning. They can also shine a light on areas that are important to your citizens, external stakeholders, and to your own employees. Um, as an independent organization that conducts over twenty-six-hundred audits of state and local governments every year, our audits can be relied upon to provide transparent results directly to citizens. And then lastly, another really important role of audits is their ability to identify areas where efficiency can be improved and you can be more effective in complying with requirements. Um, and then on the flip side, they can also tell you where you're already working efficiently and effectively. So the goal of this presentation today is just to make sure that you understand the audit results and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. Um, so with that, I will turn it over to Tammy to share the financial audit results.
Thank you, Amy. Our financial audit for covered period January first of two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. So this is fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a good opinion, that is the opinion you want in accordance with regulatory basis of accounting. So that's as per the bars manual because the county does report as cash. There is an adverse opinion included in the report based on GAAP because the county does report uh, as a cash basis, there is the adverse opinion on GAAP. That is a standard opinion that we give in our reports with that. Our audit, of course, was conducted in accordance with the government auditing standards. We found in our review of internal controls and compliance of the financial reporting, no significant deficiencies in internal control and no deficiencies that were material weakness. So we noted no instances of noncompliance that were material to the financial statements for the county. Required communications, we usually report, um, if there are any uncorrected misstatements within the financial report. There were no uncorrected statements. And additionally, there were no material misstatements that were found in our um, audit of the financial statements, whether corrected or not. So there were no material misstatements. The financial report um is split up amongst the the uh, full report, so it will actually be at the beginning and then the single audit report. And then there'll be some more additional information um, in the re- in the packet that is the financial report. Additionally, we do some uh, following additional risks income in part with our financial audit, which is management override of controls. Additionally, there's fiduciary reporting. Um, this is the reporting that is included financial statements on the C five. And so this would cover junior taxing districts and that reporting that is done um, for the monies that are held uh, for the junior taxing districts by the county. And of course, there's financial condition that we looked at specifically for the Belfair and Russell Wood sewers. And we will go over that when we review the um follow-up to the uh, prior audit. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Darcy to review the uh, single audit.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, we also performed a federal grant or a single audit for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. The objective of this audit was to ascertain whether the county materially complied with requirements of receiving receiving federal funding. Uh, we are happy to report that we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the opinion that you would like to receive. And this opinion provides assurance that funds were expended in accordance to their intended purposes and all requirements were largely followed. It is also important to note that our audits are conducted in accordance with uniform, uniform guidance. And these standards require us to gain an understanding of the county's internal controls or processes it has to ensure gr- uh, federal grant requirements are followed. Uh, we reported no significant deficiencies in internal control, controls. However, we did identify uh, deficiencies that we considered to be material weaknesses and noted instances of noncompliance that were required to be reported. For your reference, these results are detailed on pages seventeen through twenty of your packet. And then to satisfy the forty percent coverage requirement set by the federal guidelines, we selected the following um, three COVID grants for inclusion in our audit. These programs represent approximately fifty-nine percent of the county's federal expenditures for two thousand and twenty-one. And as previously, previously mentioned, we did identify deficiencies and instances of noncompliance, which I will turn over to Vinnie Shield to go over in more detail.
Thanks, Darcy. Um, so our audit identified concerns with um, the federal grant compliance that will be included in our public report as an audit finding. Um, if you'd like to read through it in detail, it is available on page nine of that packet that Tammy sent out. Um, so I would like to walk you through that today and answer any questions you might have. Um, so as Darcy previously discussed, our federal grant compliance audits are performed uh, to ascertain where the, the county complied with the various requirements, which come along with being a recipient of federal funding. Um, so while our audit found that the county overall complied with the most of the requirements, um, we examined, we did identify noncompliance with one particular area, that being uh, the federal suspension and debarment requirements. Um, so a little background about suspension and debarment, if anyone's not familiar with that, uh, it's a process the federal government has in place to ban certain vendors or organizations from receiving federal funds if they are be found to be committing fraud or otherwise abusing uh, funds that are sent to them. Um, so for this requirement, the county is required to perform certain procedures and verify they're not sending uh, federal funds to any organizations that are suspended or debarred prior to actually sending those funds or awarding contracts. Uh, so for both the emergency rental assistance, as well as that's, that SLURF program, which is um, normally called ARPA or referred to as ARPA, um, the county referred contracts to nonprofits who handled the day-to-day operations of providing rental assistance to your residents. Um, we identified a total of four contracts that provided about three point four million dollars to these nonprofits during two thousand and twenty-one, um, where their suspension debarment status was not verified using one of the three available methods. Um, in addition to that, the Department of Commerce required the county to include specific suspension debarment language in its contracts, uh, but that was left out. So during our audit, we were able to confirm that these nonprofits were not actually suspended or debarred. Um, therefore, we are pleased to report we're not actually questioning any costs. So overall, that means the county still spent grant funds on allowable uses. Uh, however, we are required to report this as an audit finding since the requirement itself was not followed. Um, so the county was able to include a, a response that's going to be part of our finding, um, and that's available to the public. And then in regards to that issue, we recommend the county improve its process for checking that organizations are not suspended or debarred before um, awarding them contracts or sending them funds and double checking that you include any required language in your contracts. Is there anyone who has questions about that before we move on? Not seeing any hands raised, so I'll keep going. So as part of our audits, we also perform uh, follow-up proceed, procedures on the two findings that we issued as part of our two thousand and twenty audit. Uh, the first one was related to the county's CARES grant. A relatively small portion of those grant funds were spent on payroll costs, which fell outside of the allowed timeframe. Uh, so we selected that grant for review again in two thousand and twenty-one, and we are pleased to say the matter was fully corrected. Uh, we determined that grant funds were spent within the allowed timeframe. And the county approved its controls um, to ensure the grant was spent within the the period of performance set by the feds. Um, so a summary schedule of this prior audit finding, um, along with the county's corrective actions taken will be included in our public report and you can view that on page fourteen, if you like to see it. And then in regards to the second finding, um, that was related to the overall financial condition of the Belfair in Russell Wood sewer funds. Uh, we have been repeating that finding since two thousand and sixteen, um, due to those funds being in a difficult financial position overall and having to rely on revenues um, outside of their operations continue functioning in the debt payments. We are pleased to say the county has made significant progress recently and we are no longer reporting this matter as a finding. Um, there were a number of factors that led to this improvement. Um, so your public works department has continued installing water meters so that customers could rebuild based on their actual usage instead of a flat monthly, monthly rate. Uh, in addition to that, um, where customers have joined the county's expanded system, um, which has led to higher revenues. Um, so while we are reporting this as being fully corrected, um, the county should continue monitoring the finances of these systems. Um, it took a number of years for these financial issues to develop and and uh, took years for the county to take corrective action and for customers to join your system. Uh, so it is a good idea to continue monitoring that, making sure um, things continue improving. Um, so that um, summary schedule, as long as the county's corrective action um, is available on page fourteen, I believe, of your packet. Um, so we did want to extend our appreciation to your public works department for all the work they put into correcting that matter and following up on it. And then um, moving into tracker, um, this is a tool that's probably largely going to be used um by Leo if the county desires to. This is a portion of our website, which is dedicated to our audit recommendations and it provides um all of our clients the opportunity to talk about uh, what the current status is of recommendations that we previously issued um, and describe, you know, what the county's done in response. Um, we added that feature to our website um, a couple of years ago, since um, there are citizens out there who are, you know, really interested in government operations and they don't want to wait. That typically the year it takes for us to come back and do another audit to see what the status is of any high-level recommendations we have. Um, so that provides the county an opportunity to um, get out uh, before audit and take um, credit for any action that's taken in response to our findings. Um, so getting towards the end of our audits, uh, we always want to extend our appreciation to everyone involved in our audits. We understand everyone has all their typical job duties and audit is added to that. So we wanted to thank all the county officials and, and staff who helped out and assisted with us. We were particularly involved with your finance and public health departments this year um, for all the, the financial audit as well as the um, the grants we reviewed this year. And of course, we want to extend a special thanks to Leo acting as the main contact for us. Um, how many act does it go between, between us as well as a lot of um, other people within the county? So we wanted to extend our thanks to him. Um, so with that, Amy had just a few things to describe or talk about to cover our presentation.
Um, so first of all, we're very pleased to report that the actual audit costs are going to be about five thousand dollars less than our original estimate. Um, just because we were able to obtain the information we needed so quickly, everything was really organized. And so that, that helps us move through the audit very quickly. So thank you very much for that. Um, your next audit will be in summer of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, it's going to have a two-year accountability audit as part of it. Um, normally the county's on a annual accountability audit cycle and we, we look at that every year, but um, we're still, we're still playing catch-up from all the um extensions with all the federal grant money that was going through and when people's remote for COVID, the feds um, but lots of governments um, extended the deadlines. And so that's kind of pushed everything back and there's just a lot of federal money we're still auditing. So um, we had to push a lot of our accountability audits to next year. So we'll be doing a two-year accountability audit for the county. Um, and then a one-year financial statement and a one-year federal program audit. Um, so there's an estimated cost for next audit in your exit packet. I believe it's on page two. Um, but just when you're looking at this year's cost versus next year's cost and going, why is it so much higher? Because we've got the two-year accountability audit in there too. On next slide, please. Yep. So um, audit reports get published on our website. Um, and I would expect that your report will probably get published next Monday, the twenty-ninth. Um, Lee, you will automatically get a notification when that uh, report goes out. Um, but anyone else who'd like to get notified, you can always go out to our website and sign up to get whatever email notifications you'd like. Um, and at the same time that that report um, gets published, Leo, you're also going to get a link to an audit survey. Um, and you're welcome to forward that to anyone else at the county who participated in the audit and would like to provide um, feedback. We always feel like the more feedback, the better because um, really helps inform our um, processes and let us know what's working, what's not. And so we can make those adjustments really um, help make the audit as easy on you all as possible. Um, so that, I believe, is it for us. Are there any questions or comments before we wrap up?
Yeah, just a, real quick for me, just a, a word of thanks uh, to all of the staff from SAO um, and for all the work that you've done uh, this year for us and over the past several years, as well as to Leo and our entire financial services team and um, folks in our county administration team as well. It's just, it's a total team effort and I think um, you know, your comments are not lost on us when, you know, you, you made a, you made mention of our cost being about five thousand dollars less because of uh, sort of the ease of getting access to information and, and that wasn't always the case. And so um, we're just really grateful for all the work that, that's gone into this and, and obviously the, the big big victory here for Mason County is the findings being fully corrected on the Belfair and Russell Wood sewer systems. That's been an albatross. Uh, you know, around us for the past several years and um, your, your comments are also well-taken that we need to continue to lean into the plan uh, and continue to, to work on um, stabilizing and growing that system, both systems, um, and investing in those as well. So appreciate everything and uh, we'll look forward to seeing you next summer.
Yeah, and, and just echo the, echo the comments. I think that um, we've got an amazing staff and, and, and so do you. So appreciate everybody from both offices, both departments. Um, I know our, our, our employees rock. But it's neat that others can see how, how well they manage and, and how transparent and accountable they are. So thank you guys.
The same for me. Thank you for all your hard work and of course Leo and stuff, you know, much we appreciate you and everything you do. So thank you for stepping up as always.
Very good. Go ahead, Leo.
And uh, wanted to thank all the departments for the, the work they do for the, during the audit and during the year. And uh, I, I always enjoy working with SAO and uh, working with Tammy was really good. And uh, the financial services staff is, is always makes me, makes me look good and and Jennifer in the budget office, I know uh, throughout the year, she does wonderful. And then the last couple of years, she's been hit really hard with all the, with the grants and the COVID. And also with the, the finding, the, but the Belfair. Uh, not only public works, but Mark and uh, the um, the commissioners, they did, did a ton of work to resolve that. So uh, appreciate, I appreciate all of that.
Alrighty, well, thanks so much, everybody. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, our next item up is District Court Judge Still. I see you on there. If you're ready, you can go ahead with your briefing.
Okay, um, what we're asking for is in the uh, in our paper, in our attachments, we're asking to get authorization to increase our pro temp um compensation to ninety dollars an hour uh, starting January one. Uh, the reasons are basically to keep our rates competitive with other counties. Patsy did a, uh, did a survey of our comparable counties. Um, most were higher. There's a couple that are still lower and uh, what this will do is put these slightly perhaps above the exact middle point. Uh, we're asking this primarily because of the fact that we want to hang on to our pro temps. Uh, we do need to uh, make sense of use of the matter of fact, we have a a jury trial on a case I'm, would not be able to hear that's being heard by a pro temp as we speak. Uh, that'd be former Commissioner Sauerlander. He's agreed to come and help out with District Court from time to time. Um, so we're really in my mind, working about four and a half pro temps. When I say that, I don't mean we have a half a person showing up. I mean that have a person who's kind of like, if you can't get anybody else, give me a call. That is what I mean by that. So that's in a nutshell what it's all about. If we, if we follow this period court, went with the two hundred, like one to fifty, the hourly rate would work out to ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents. We're actually a little bit below that is what we're requesting. So I'm asking for authorization for us to be able to do so starting January one.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for Judge Steele?
Would that be January twenty-twenty-three? Or? Okay.
This coming January. I did not want to start in the middle of a budget, like in the middle of our budget and all that. Um,
Appreciate that.
So so part of it is my mind, I want to give you guys a, you guys, the commissioners, that should be more formal. The commissioners, a heads up as to um, what we're thinking about wanting to do.
And so this is included in your preliminary budget for next year as well?
And the work and we'd be able to cover the cost if, if our preliminary budget was followed. If anytime I say something that Patsy doesn't agree with, I've already told her. Um, don't be afraid to pipe up.
Well, I can't see Patsy being afraid to pipe up if necessary or when needed.
I just told her I'd deal with her later. Or she'd deal with me. I'm not sure which it was. Well, that's kind of in the, in the nutshell. What's those questions?
Okay, Commissioner Allen, any questions or?
I'm just looking over uh, what, what they presented. And you know, even back in two thousand and nineteen, the average was eighty-eighty-six. So it makes sense.
Okay, uh, it's like, it sounds like we're supporting Commissioner Trask. Are you supportive?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I am as well. Uh, so we can go ahead and move forward with that. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is uh, the treasurer's office. Now, Treasurer, if you're available. We might need to ping Lisa. We're a few minutes ahead of schedule. Oh, it's actually unmuted. Hi there.
Hello, good morning. Sorry about that. It is chaos up here.
We were down below, we heard.
It is chaos. So I have IT calling and maintenance running around and all kinds of issues. So I apologize if it gets noisy while I'm with you here this morning. So um, I have been working with and the audit committee has been working with the um, landfill on strengthening their cash controls and so forth. So I have in front of you a resolution to amend a resolution that creates some cash drawers and gives the, goes from six to eight, which will allow each of their staff to have their own cash drawers and accountability for such moving forward. Um, they've been sharing them. That is not a good practice and so we want to change that. They've also asked to increase the amounts in their drawers since they do um, a large volume of cash. And so we're recommending that as well. Um, the budget impact is seventeen hundred dollars and they have that within their capabilities to handle. Um, so we're looking to change their cash drawers from six currently to seven, changing those drawers from two fifty or two hundred to four hundred dollars each. And their managers change bag from four fifty to five hundred dollars moving forward. So that's what we'll be bringing forward to you. Do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea.
With the issues we've had in the past, this increases uh, accountability. I think it's a wise move. Thank you.
Yes, and, and I appreciate working with utilities and um, all of them up there to make these happen. Then um, we've had lots of good conversations, so.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. Appreciate the continued effort to strengthen our checks and balances.
Alright, so get this all, as long as you're good with it, it'll be moved to your next um, commissioners meeting for approval and then we'll get those changes underway for them as soon as possible.
Excellent. Thanks, Lisa. Good luck up there today.
Thanks. It's gonna be, you know, quite the week, but thank you.
Yeah.
Bye.
Okay, next up, we have community services. Uh, Dave, are you available?
Right here. Thank you. Good morning. So our, our first item is just purely informational. Uh, I used to do this a while back. Haven't done it in a while and that's uh, to, to bring out um our financials in a graphic form. So it's, it's easier to, to look at and it gives us good comparisons over time. So uh, we sent out, I sent out six pages of graphics this week. And just looking for feedback, is this the kind of information you want? Is this the, the format you like it in? And I want to bring out one difference on the last page, but I can come back to that in a minute.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Okay, um, on the, on the last page is the Barge Report two thousand and twenty-one. And that's, I haven't reported that in the past. It's, it's something that we do once a year. We have to, to turn into DOH how our department was funded and in using their particular format. And then it's published along with all the other health jurisdictions across the state, usually like two years behind. This is last year's data that we just submitted in April. So our, our requirement is to have this report done by, I think, April fifteen. So it's on the state website by the first of June. And, and this is the report as it gets pulled down from the state. So it's, it's just something I have not reported before and it's something that the DOH and OFM tend to look at when they're doing funding analysis on what, what the counties are doing. So I think it was kind of important for the commission to see as well.
Great.
Okay, our next item is, if there's no questions. Okay, uh, next Okay, uh, next item is a a contract amendment, actually a new contract. Consolidated homeless grant amendment, actually it's amendment, Amendment C, and this is between Mason County and. Crossroads, it adds another ninety eight thousand ninety eight dollars to. Their contract from July first of this year to June thirtieth of next year. For rapid rehousing and supportive services to reduce and prevent homelessness. And as we saw this last week, this is a a really valuable program as we talk about the homeless situation here in Mason County. So yeah, we'd like to bring this to action agenda next week and get this signed and and moving forward.
I'm definitely supportive of this. Commissioners?
Wow, as am I. I think it's great.
Yes.
It's kind of cool to see Sandra Adix. She was our attorney, Assistant Attorney General. For the Public Works Board. So it's kind of neat to send her, see her name on this form.
Okay, any other questions on that? If not, Kel has the next piece on fire.
Hello, and actually I will hand that off to Randy Collins.
Uh, thank you, Kel. I hope, can everybody hear me? Just want to make sure. Okay, great. Uh, good morning, Chair Schudie, Commissioners, Netherland and Trask. That the item for you is a policy that's we've developed for implementing burn restrictions in the county. Um, with fire seasons growing longer in Mason County being subject to increasing number of heatways. And wildfire threats, a strong need has emerged to adopt a uniform policy for implementing burn restrictions. Uh, just a little background, for years, this has been accomplished at the state and federal levels through the use of the National Fire Danger Rating System. Which at times uh, was not always followed by the county. This resulted in some public confusion and did frustrate some local fire districts who spent a considerable amount of time. And resources responding to burn complaints. Um, and with most challenged by staffing shortages with recruitment and retention, it also increases the risk of their agency being delayed. To a true life threatening emergency while being engaged on such calls. Um, in an effort to minimize public confusion and reduce this demand. This policy was developed and brought for the review and and input to the county fire chiefs, which after some edits. Was overwhelmingly approved by them at their August meeting. And it's now being brought to you for your concurrence. So the requested action would be after your consideration to give. Uh, my office, the uh, approval to implement the policy. And that's the conclusion of my report and I'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Great, anything, Commissioners?
I think it's it's cool to see the the teamwork that that's happening here. Um, I see we've got some. Some folks from Central Mason, it looks like. And want to thank them for for being a part of the the team and joining this. I think it's it's so cool. That we're all starting to to really, well, I guess not starting, but just to. Show that it's, we're all working together. We are a team here in Mason County. And so it's just neat to see. How this is working out. So thank you, guys.
Uh, you're welcome. And I couldn't agree with you more more Commissioner Trask. That's my whole approach is try and be as collaborative as possible. Um, into that end, I think Matt Caldwell from D N R, he deserves a lot of credit because he spent a lot of time with me and helping develop this policy. To ensure as much consistency as possible.
And everybody, and yes, I'm supportive.
Great, I I am as well and just echo the thanks, Randy, I appreciate your leadership on this and. Bringing together the chiefs and D N R and and working through the policy and procedures on this and. Um, also very supportive of moving forward with it. So um, great work.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions or comments on this item?
Great job.
Okay, Commissioners, that's all I have unless you have questions.
Yeah, could uh, Dave, would you mind get me a breakdown on that consolidated grant that we did? With exactly how many people are served, uh, when I say that, I mean, uh. I need to find out how many per average per per month that we're actually serving.
On on the housing contract?
Yeah.
Okay, can do.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Dave or Kel? Okay.
Okay.
All right, we will move into our public works briefing. Mike?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, to start off with, today we have uh, our two thousand twenty three annual road program. And our six year transportation improvement program uh, to present to you to uh, request to uh, set a public hearing. For September twenty seventh. Um, we've obviously sent you the documentation. I can go over as detailed as you would like, or we can just kind of generally what we have uh. Here for our first twenty four items are are actual funded projects uh, through S T P. Uh, through our gravel roads program, uh, through safety enhancement. And uh, we have two new projects on here for bridges too. So. Uh, along with our our normal rap process. So. Uh, the one I would say I would like to note is uh, item number fourteen, which is the Harstein Island Bridge. Uh, you see that's in there funded. We're actually working on that this year. We've actually awarded the contract, but. It's such a weather dependent project that we're going to go ahead and add it on for next year, just in case anyway, just in case we get into some weather that. That can't complete the the project uh, in twenty twenty two. So. That's a redundancy, but we're just covering covering both both sides there. That's that's the annual program.
Uh, Mike, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I am seventeen. The Skok Valley Road Reconstruction. What what is, what is that?
That is a uh, what they call flap funding. Uh, there is a uh, the program for the uh, the projects out there for the dips. Uh, where we're going to raise the road, a section of the road. So there's a couple of different fundings there. There's a federal lands access program. There's some funding. And that's some match money for that is what it is. And then there's also the tribal money and uh, I think there's uh, through uh. Conservation District or some other funding. Um, so it's all a combination of that one project there, that they're they're going to raise that section of road.
Okay, thank you.
I'm supportive of putting it on the agenda uh, to set public area.
Uh, I am as well. And just Mike, the question I was going to ask is, is there any way to denote on here? Um, which projects are are done with county forces and. Which ones are?
Yes, if you if you look on the uh, annual program and you go all the way over to.
Yeah.
Little the right hand side there. It says, and if you toggle, if you toggle down through county forces, it'll show which which project we're working county forces.
Great.
So although old Belfair Highway, we actually have got that extended. Um, we're going instead of do four tenths of a mile, we're going to do. Uh, one point four miles. And so we're going to do all the dirt work with our county forces and then put out a contract uh, for the paving. And then our uh, road uh, or gravel road conversions are all county forces work themselves too. So. And then the last two items, which are federal um, uh, safety money items. We're working with the local programs to allow the county forces to do both those projects too, since they are so small of projects.
And then Mike, what's our, what's our annual cap on that? Is there, there's a limit to what we can?
It's about one point two million. It gets calculated, but it's it's around one point two millions our annual cap. And so. We're pushing it. We're pushing it to being uh, just over a million dollars here.
Great.
But we have, we have the guys, we have the talent, we have the equipment. And so we're trying to, we're trying to maximize that.
Yeah, I know, just being able to go out and visit the uh, the Culver project the other week. Uh, up on North Shore, you know, just getting to see the crew out there doing doing their thing and you know, just out there doing projects, I think is a. There's a great benefit to the county and and just to just appreciate the emphasis on doing more with county forces. Uh, you know, over the past few years and getting that, getting that role and that's great.
Yep, they've been doing a great job. Well, then our our six year transportation program, the the, I know there's a lot of sheets there. But uh, the first twenty four items are the exact same as the annual program. So those are the funded projects. Everything else that goes beyond there are basically, it's not, I wouldn't call it wishlist, but basically it's future projects. Kind of married with what type of funding would work for this type of project. So there's a mix of S T P, a rap. Uh, of bridges and stuff. And so these are projects we're submitting for. Uh, funding, but we don't know when, you know, we'll actually get that, whether it be twenty four or whether. Uh, down the road. And so as things get funded, they'll jump up, obviously into the annual annual program. And uh, and we'll move forward with it. So. Uh, the total wishlist is about forty six million.
Mike, has any, uh, have these projects been looked at in comparison to the uh, the latest transportation package? That was passed by the legislature this year to see if there's anything on here that that might be eligible over the life of that program.
I have, I have not.
Okay.
But I will.
Okay. Yeah, that might be a good conversation for for you and Mark with uh, with our lobbyist Deborah. Um, just to, you know, over time, just kind of be mindful of that, of the funding that's out there and. See if anything pairs up and might might deserve a bump up to the annual eventually.
Will do.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions or comments on? The six year?
Your projects.
Okay. All right, next up.
Okay, so the next up, what we've recently, well, a couple of months ago, we handed out the six year program and annual program to uh, the tip cap. And they've been in the process of reviewing that, but. Obviously, uh, recently we've we've were issues with reappearance. So what we're asking uh, now is to. To request to reappoint uh, Don Pogriba. Uh, for a three year term, uh, Tim Lincoln also for a three year term. And then Jeff Carey, Jack Johnson, Philip Wolf and Mark Carlson all for two year terms. That will stagger the terms and make it to where we're not all uh, up at the same time again, like we kind of ran into.
Yeah, so I took a look at this and I think with the new organization that we have in terms of. Breakdown of uh, of uh. Commissioner districts and all that kind of stuff. I would be supportive of uh, reappointing Don, Tim and Phil. Right now, and I've been, I've been contacted by a number of people uh, interested in filling some of the vacancies. And so just. I think that would get you a quorum and uh, and then I'd be interested in. Uh, you know, just kind of dogging it on some of the folks that reached out for applications in particular because. Uh, there's nobody on here from, uh, with the exception of uh, Amy Asher, um, from my commissioner district. So I I think the, what I'm willing to do is appoint. Those three with uh, the the two, three year terms and the one, two year term. Uh, and then then try to get some equity on there uh, from from my district.
Yeah, I took a look at it also and and the membership and counted to see we're a little off balance as far as the district scope. And so if we could make it a little bit more um. Balanced, I think that that would, that would be, that would be great. I I do feel sorry. I did notice that Commissioner Shute's district was not well represented. And so. Yeah, I think I I could go with that as long as as we have a quorum so that we can make sure that that we can can continue um, tip cap. They have an important role. And so making sure that they can. Um, move things forward is is important to me too.
I'd like to say, I think they've all served with distinction and they've done all this work for all these years. Uh, you know, just to to leave out some of these people, i- it leaves me very uncomfortable with uh, the process that we may be going through. I would like to make sure it only makes sense. It's it's regarding changing how things go up. Uh, it makes sense that each commissioner would have a say or a conversation of who represents in their district. Uh, that's how things have always been done in the past. Be ashamed to do away with that now. And I do know that over the years, we've tried and tried and tried and tried again. And the committee has tried again to get uh, people to come in from that one specific district. But I do think it's important that that district does get represented. So if there are people that are on the. On the line that maybe turning an application shortly, I think we definitely have to take that into consideration because that district needs to be represented. Especially if we change things to represent as we just asked them to do uh, last month. Where we're going from three from each district. So again, I would like to have a a conversation of of who represents my district. Uh, and who I'd like to see in there. And I think that's only right for each one of you.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just told you who I would support reappointing. So I mean, we could talk about it, but.
Yeah, I know we had two um, gentlemen in the commission meeting last week that are planning on turning in applications too. So I think, I think the more we reach out and the the better it is for all of our districts. And um, that way we do have a a more of a say of who's who's representing our districts too.
Mike, had you had any conversation with Jeff about what his plans were? Moving over to planning commission? No, no, I have not.
I have. Uh, he's waiting for us. We haven't decided what we're doing on the planning commission. Uh, I know in talking with Mark also, we. I explained to him that we don't have a true planning commission as you see in the R C Ws. Ours is a planning advisory commission, which is completely different. Uh, and that we've tried to do the same where we want to represent uh, the districts, but when that isn't uh, possible or. Uh, not applicable, that we still fill the positions. And then when the next position opens, we go out to that same district that is shy. Uh, and try to appoint from that district again.
And I thought the issue with Jeff was was more serving on both, if he was interested in serving on both, if there was a restriction there.
Yeah, no, there's no restriction. Uh, the the way the rule was written is that we give preference. To people that are willing to serve on one, but we could, they could still serve on on mutual. But uh, we changed that rule some years ago to give a preference to applicants that are not dual in their uh, in their duties.
Okay. So, yeah, so I just, I guess, I just stand by the, I mean, if Jeff is interested, I'd be interested in having him on both if he's up for that. That's fine.
Uh, you'd be interested in having him on the uh, planning commission? Because I was going to ask that question later. Because that's what he's waiting to find out what's happening there. Are we interested in uh? You know, bringing him forward for the planning commission. And then I guess he would make up his mind at that point. I have no problem calling and asking him, but.
That's fine with me. If he has a preference, I would just, I would default to whatever his preference is.
And I think my concern is just if if. You know, did we have a policy or 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 was there something in the R C Ws that? Said that, you know, one one committee is more than another. So that that's that's where my concern was. That's an asset anywhere we're putting, so.
Yep, he is. I, as I shared with uh, with Mark, uh, because we're not a true commission, it is a lot different. We we set up the policy for that years ago. And as I said, the policy that was uh, that we decided on gave preference, but not restricted. From holding two positions. So I guess I'll get a hold of Marcus, Mark on, Mark's on, Mark. Did you hear all that or?
I did, yep.
Okay.
Yep, we can figure that out for sure.
Great.
Yeah, I talked to Diane a little bit about it. Um, but. I think it's up to the commission if we don't have all the districts representing.
Thank you. So now, uh, uh, Commissioners, are we, are we saying though that uh, we are not going to uh? To give difference to the three different uh, commissions on the, on the tip cap and the commissioners having a say in their district?
You you can have a say. There's no issue with that. I just told you who I would support. That's all I said.
Yeah, well, and and I'd like to see the two applications that come in. I don't remember what districts they were from. And and so um. I would like to see those two before I commit to. More. If that makes sense.
Yeah, when, when was our deadline? I know we put out before and didn't get applications. When did we ask them to be in this time?
You know, I don't think that we had a deadline on when we handed them or when I handed them the applications. I don't recall. Giving them a deadline. Mike, do we have a a deadline for the? Giving them a deadline. Mike, do we have a, a deadline for the? To receive applications?
Uh, we, we would just like to have, uh, you know, tip cap be able to review and, and make any recommendations before. Or before the, uh, the public hearing. Which we're requesting to be on September twenty seven.
Right, and we do have a quorum now?
Uh, we do not have a quorum now.
Do not have a quorum.
We have, uh. Uh, I believe Amy and Tim are the only ones that are currently.
Right, and so we went, if we went with Don. Tim and Jeff would that give us a, a quorum?
If we have four. No, and that could. You know, we could extend it, but that, that, that's just where we, we, we proposed the, the public hearing and, and the, the meeting could be. You know. That could be set just prior to it too. It doesn't have to be necessarily on the fourteenth. Um, which is, would be the next tip cap meeting.
Yeah, and I, I would just say too, the other thing where this presentation is lacking is noting where these folks live. Whether they're in the U G A or in the unincorporated areas. And so that was what I had asked for last week. Um, because I, I think if you look at this list again, heavy on District One. Uh, and I, you know, and so I think some of them are in the U G A, some of them are out of the U G A. You know, and so that's why based on addresses, uh, you know, I would support Don, Tim, Phil. And then having Commissioner Nellin chat with Jeff about what his, his wishes are, knowing that would be open to whatever. It is Jeff wants to do. That gets you a quorum. If we value a quorum and we really want tip cap to review it, that gets you what you need for that. And then we continue to work on this as, as I mentioned. Uh, there were some other folks that had reached out, uh, that were interested, uh, you know, I guess kind of heard our, our plea last week and. Uh, are interested. And so, you know, do we value having certain people on here or do we value having a forum? To do the work. I've offered up a path to get us to a forum.
I'm good with that, Pat.
And that's what we'll do.
Okay.
But I, again, we agreed that we would go with a different route. I'd like to see the, the uh, I would like to see the. Districts that they're in and if they are in the U G A and I would love to have a. A, a say on, on my own district that I represent. And who I think represents my district.
And you, you've absolutely had that opportunity and everybody stopped you from doing that. I just told you who I would support and how we could get to a quorum.
And if you go online, I think you can also see where they're, they're at. Um, I went to our county site. And it, um, kind of tells you what, what section they're, they're representing. But some of them don't quite fit in my opinion, so, um. I would say let, let, let's go with. Um. The ones that have been. So what Commissioner Shu, Shu said, so Commissioner Shu, Shu said, Don, Tim and. Bill.
Bill.
And then we've got Amy. And then, um, so that does give us a quorum. And then Mike, you were gonna call Jeff. So that would give us more than a quorum. Does that sound good?
Wanted to call Jeff just.
Right, to make sure that he, he was good with doing both committees.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thanks everybody. Next item?
Uh, next item, and we'll pass it on to Richard and or Justin.
I'm passing this on to Justin. He did all the work on this. I'll do it if he wants me to, but he's the man on this. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you. Morning Commissioners. We got uh, two items today. Uh, first being, um, repairing of the turbo blowers for the bale fair, uh, reclamation facility. Um, K Turbo is the only. Um, I guess the sole source supplier of parts and also repair of those, and they are based out of, um. Batavia, Illinois. I think that's how you pronounce it. Not very cultured, so apologies on that one if I got it wrong. Um. It's, it's a vital, important process to make sure that we supply oxygen for the microorganisms. So it's, it's imperative that we make sure that we have that system up and running. So. Um, getting that repaired is, is crucial. Um. The repair cost on that is eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety, uh, ninety seven dollars. Um, we're sitting really good on our repair and maintenance budget. We're at ninety three percent currently, um. And after the repairs would be about eighty one thousand left, which is eighty one percent. So. Um, yeah, any questions on that?
It's good to me, Commissioners.
Looks, looks good to me.
No questions.
Great, perfect. All right, moving on. Uh, next. Um, we're talking about the, trying to get a maintenance contract with uh, Huber Screens. Um, screening for M B R systems, so the membrane, membrane filtration system there for the bale fair, uh, reclamation facility is. Probably the most important part of, of. That facility in regards to making sure that the membranes do not get fouled up. Um, you know, if, if you don't have good screening, then you're in a world of hurt because you're actually taking up capacity within those membranes. And uh, it just leads to maintenance nightmares and. You know, uh, not very good effluent quality. Um, so we're actually looking at trying to get a three year, uh, service agreement with Huber. Um, I, I ended up getting just a one time service quote just to see the comparisons for those. And that was for a one time visit. I think it's around seventy six hundred dollars. Um, with a three year contract, it's forty five hundred dollars, um, each year. Um, and it's taken out not, not like as a, as a total, it's taken out each year. So forty five hundred. For this year when they come to service it next year and then the following year after that. Um, again, you, I, I, I broke down some of the percentages of what we have. Uh, left in our repair and maintenance budget. And as far as our budget impact, we, we used to have quite a bit of room. So, um. Yeah, any questions on that?
For me?
So Justin, do they come out, um? How frequently do they come out to? Is it just, it's a regular scheduled maintenance?
Yeah, so it'll be a scheduled one time, uh, visit that they basically, they fly their, uh. Their technician out and they come out for either one or two days depending on, on the scope of the job. Um, and then, yeah, we, the nice thing is we're actually able to have the operations staff come and kind of observe some of the things that they're doing. To really make sure that we can actually update our maintenance side of things, uh, which is. Crucial because we're trying to get more, more of a. I guess, uh, educated team to where we can do a lot, lot more in-house. So.
I support it. Thank you.
Great, Commissioner Nellin?
Yes.
Great, okay.
Thank you so much. That's it. That's all I have.
All right, Commissioner, is anything for Mike, Richard, Justin, or anybody at Public Works?
Not at this moment.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mark? We got quite a list for you today. So uh, jump right in with Diane talking about lodging taxes.
Morning. So I'm presenting the twenty twenty three Visitor Information Center, um, Awards. That were recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. We met back on July twentieth. So for twenty twenty three, the recommendation is to award to the North Mason Chamber of Commerce. Forty eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve. To the Mason County Historical Society, nineteen thousand, one thirty seven. And to the Shelton Mason County Chamber. Hundred and six thousand, one twenty three. Are there any questions?
And this was, this was fully recommended by the L TAC Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, be, before that, Commissioner Trask, is there anything you want us to know from? From that meeting?
No, we always have some, some lively conversations. It's a fun committee. Um, but no, I think that, that, um, Diane summarized it very perfectly.
Okay.
And to let the board know, Heidi McCutcheon is on, um, the Zoom meeting. She had asked if she could present some information. And I know Pam's on here too from North Mason Chamber if there's questions.
Okay, um, I mean, I'm supportive of, of following the L TAC's recommendations, um, as they are. I don't know if Heidi still has something that she'd like to present beyond that, but Commissioners, any issues with that or any questions for Heidi?
I have no issue, but I, I'm willing to support the, the presentation now from the L TAC Committee as brought forward. Uh, that's what we do. We don't have the ability to change it anyway. We only send it back to them if we don't.
Okay. All right, Heidi, go ahead. You wanna go ahead?
Yeah, um, mainly I just wanted to be on. I know in the past you, you've had questions when our funding has increased, um. Uh, I did want to share with the commission, um. That our visitor numbers have, um, increased two hundred percent over our numbers from two thousand nineteen, so pre pandemic numbers even. Um, we're, we're seeing such, um, a surge of recreation out to the Olympic National Park, um, that I just wanted to hand you that supplemental information as well.
Any questions for Heidi?
Oh, love that. Love that people are coming to Mason County.
Absolutely. Great. Okay. Well, I think we're, you have three S's to move forward.
Thank you. I'll put that on the September thirteenth agenda. Thanks, thanks Heidi.
Mr. Taylor, you're up.
Good morning Commissioners, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good. I have three things to provide today. Uh. Back several months ago, we applied for two grants with some additional funds from the Emergency Management Performance Grant Funds. We applied for a CERT, CERT trailers for the community and we applied for a U T V. Uh, the U T V was at the top of our list because of the life safety, uh, we experienced during the snowstorm. And needing that, uh, unit, we went, they went ahead and approved us for the CERT trailers. We went back in and asked for clarification. And as of last week, the latter part, they approved the U T V. So we've been authorized both the U T V to be purchased and the CERT trailers. Which we're now going to have to go in and of course amend the contract. Because we only have the CERT trailers in there. So we wanted to brief you on that part and we have the in-house match that's necessary. Uh, to meet that grant requirement. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. You'll be seeing that come through in the near future as we move closer to the contract. For, uh, for the modification. Are there any questions?
Great job.
No questions for me, Commissioner Nellin?
Okay, then P U D one came to us and said that there might be a potential for us to go in a, with a grant with them for doing a county wide. Wildland Fire Improvement Plan for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, I just wanted to brief you on that. We're still working towards that, but that's something we'll bring to you, uh, if it seems to be more, uh. Coming into fruition a little faster or as we work through this. But we've already contacted the fire districts and we want to bring all eleven in to assist in developing that plan. So that we can actually have something that's not a shelf plan, but more of an execution, executable plan that's county wide. Is there any questions with that?
That's good.
So we have provided you our two thousand, I think, twenty three and twenty four training schedule. Uh, while we were developing that, we decided that we wanted to do a winter storm seminar series. Which will give our partners and ourselves the requirement of, of training and exercise for NIMs, the National Incident Management System. So we're setting up three workshop, or we're setting up one seminar, which is more pushing information out. And then two seminar or workshops that will be collaborative with our partners to sit down and work through. How we're gonna activate for the next storm and then how we're gonna work through recovery. So as we develop those presentations. We'll ensure that the commission has the ability to brief them, ask questions, and if we need to make modifications, we can before we publish those. Are there any questions with that?
Have you thought about having, uh, two, uh, different? Classes for the elected officials and, uh, community leaders. Uh, in, in north and south. The reason why I say that is, I don't know that we're gonna get people from the commissioners from Duwado and. Those areas, but I think they should be, uh. I think they should attend this.
Absolutely, sir. We can go back and modify that. We haven't really put down the schedule yet because we're still trying to figure out when we're gonna have the north. Training center done, but we want to be able to split the classes so they're in both places. So that people from the north have the same opportunity as the, as those down here. So we'll look at that, absolutely.
Then maybe you can also sign them up for CERT training like we did, or, or I've done. I think it's important that all elected officials do that. Be more hands on if something does happen.
Yes, sir. And we're looking at CERT not being more of an individual certification, but a program. So right now we're going by communities and we're certifying their communities. That way, if their members change or whoever. Uh, they deploy, it's easier to manage those as, uh, as opposed to just individual volunteers.
Well, that, that is kind of how they've done it. Trails and Lake had an incredible group, other areas, uh, put together their own group, their own storage containers and their own stuff. I don't know if we've lost track of all that, or maybe they shift because, you know, homeowners associations shift, leadership shifts and things get forgotten, but. Uh, we used to have those, at least when I took them.
Yes, sir. We're going through that now and, and either bringing them back in, the ones that have been lost in the past. And reassuring that we still have the contacts. What we plan to do is all our volunteer groups, we want to put binders together in the Emergency Operations Center. That gives us their bylaws, who their primary people are for contact, their E O Ps, their emergency response plans. And, and also their, uh. Uh, approval to adopt NIMs, the National Incident Management System. And their requirement every year to validate that they have, uh, complied with NIMs. So we'll have a binder on all our volunteer organizations within the near future that will have all that information in it.
Well, especially in areas that have been cut off in the past. Duwado's been cut off in the past. Tohuia River Valley, not, uh, Tohuia River. Well, actually, they were cut off too, two separate ones, uh. To who, the town of Tohuia down in the water and Tohuia River Valley are two separate entities, completely separated from each other. Uh, but reaching out to each one of those would be important. Each of those have been cut off from humanity for some period of time, the last twelve, fifteen years.
And that's our intent.
You know, sometimes that, the state sometimes drives me crazy as, as all their programs and everything, but one thing that I really did like is, is they had, um. You, you were certified, you're CERT trained. And every floor like in the ledge building had a, a, um. Um, a CERT. Certified person. They had a, a bag with a helmet and everything else. And so it signified, it told people that you were that, you were that person. Um, and I, I was it for the, for quite a few years and just enjoyed the heck out of it. But, but the training that you get is. Amazing. They also said that they have, so. They do have this, the separate training for elected and then for, um, staff. But honestly, John, I don't know of any elected in the ledge building that. That were, that was certified. So it was up to staff. So, so important that we get everybody certified. We're not. Washington State is kind of volatile. Instead of have people trained in, in, on how to assist is so important. And it's. Here I go again. I love that we're reaching out and that you're working with our fire departments. They're critical in this and, you know, all of our first responders are. They're, they're far, they're trained better than we are, but if we can help them in any way possible, I, I would love that. So.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we're thinking about bringing in, yes, another DART program in since we already have two. But it's disaster, uh, assistance response teams and they're actually for government employees. So it teaches them a little bit more about how to, uh, visually inspect a building that's been damaged by earthquakes, how to nationally market whether you can enter it or not. So that's one of the programs we want to look at implementing here as well. But then we have DART, which is a disaster animal response team. And then DART, the disaster air, uh, response team. So our aviation team. So. We, another DART, we'll try to figure another name up so we don't confuse it too much. But what we're attempting to do is give, I'm sorry, sorry.
How big is your board?
You should come in the E O C. We have multiple boards. They're all covered. That's, we kind of think out loud. So. Uh, we're, we're looking at bringing those in so they're less confusing, but, uh. We're, we're trying to get away from certifying individuals and getting more into certifying teams. As disaster reservists and, uh, emergency workers. Because we would have over four hundred people we would have to manage as opposed to. Because we would have over 400 people we would have to manage as opposed to maybe 40 groups, which is still large. But it, it's a lot better than trying to manage 400 individual people.
Oh, for sure. Thanks, John.
Welcome. That's all I have.
What about, uh, the fields?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm going to have that on for the next, next week. I didn't get it in time since we didn't get the decision until Friday. So, uh, that I, I'm not sure commissioner, were you able to get ahold of them? I'll go and email them again today.
Yes, I, I got ahold of them and expressed and talked about what we, uh, had discussed, but I, I told them that it would be coming up and we'd be hopefully moving forward, uh, off of discussions today is what I thought, because that's what you told me. So.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I was, uh, advised by Mark, we needed to bring it back through the commission. So I'll have that ready and bring it back through this next week.
We, we didn't have it in time for the agenda since it was on Friday and the agenda was already posted, Randy. Then one of the, one of the things that, um, I've been trying to hold myself accountable to with Mackenzie is if I don't get it in by Wednesday, then I'm not able to put it on the agenda. So.
Understandable.
Do any other questions for John before we move on to Jen? Go ahead, Jen.
Okay. Um, good morning, commissioners. We have the ARPA, uh, funding the requests. We received, uh, 34 requests for the second round of ARPA. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so you can see, um, the results of your scoring. Okay. And what we did, um, so we had, uh, two commissioners that, that scored each of the uh, funding requests and then one commissioner that just put in dollar amounts. And so, um, so that was, um, Sharon Trask that, um, did the dollar amounts. And then the other two commissioners did the scoring. So, um, the ones that are highlighted are Sharon's or Commissioner Trask's. Um, and then we've ranked them in order here, um, in order of the points scored. So that's how this is organized. Um, the total requests are 26,419,106 dollars and the available funding is about 6.3 million. So, um, most likely we're going to have to break some hearts. So, um, here's the, the first, uh, but the one that ranked the highest is the fiber optic, optic infrastructure, infrastructure upgrade. So I don't know how you want to go through. Do you want to go through each of these and talk about them or, um, how do you want to do this commissioners?
So can I jump in and just kind of explain how I came up with, so I started scoring them and then and then I thought, well, maybe what I'll do is just give some people calls. So I called, uh, the people that were on the list and asked them, you know, how much they would need and whether or not, um, you know, is that truly a priority for them or can we, because we're so limited on, on the amount of money and so many requests. So, so what I did is I gave them all call to find out which one was their priority and how much they would actually need. So that's how I came up with, um, my priorities. Just to explain why I didn't write or score them, some of them according to the people that I talked to, it was not a priority. They, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to ask, but it wasn't as big of a priority as, um, as was on the list and the scoring kind of, uh, I guess confused me as far as putting them in priority order, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that the scoring really, um, focused on, on capital projects, which maybe wasn't, um, or maybe not the, you know, highest priority for you. I mean, it just depends on.
I totally messed up the system. Sorry.
It's okay.
So just, uh, a couple of things. One, um, Jen, have we received any, you've applied for the, the funding, but we haven't received it yet. Correct?
That is correct. Yes.
So I, you know, I try to be a little bit of a rule follower, I guess, and I just kind of went with what staff had outlined, but I, I would like to have another crack at this list with putting some dollars to those priorities. So uh, if the commission's amenable to it, I'd, I'd like to just kind of digest this a little bit more and then look at this in, in kind of connection with the scores that I gave, um, and see if I can kind of parse out a little bit more, you know, kind of where these would fall in, in funding levels.
Yeah, that might make it easier for us to, um, to put this type of list together to, um, if you're all three going through and plugging in dollar amounts that you, um, that you would like to extend to these projects.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So we'll resend this to you and, um, in Excel format and then you can apply the, the dollar amounts. And I, I wanted to point out something too. I'm going to do a new share. So on the ARPA spreadsheet, um, so we have all of the projects in this peach color. Um, these are the new, uh, funding requests or the second round requests totaling the 26,420,000. And, um, we have the temporary county staff to address COVID. We had approved, um, $250,000, uh, previously. And I went back and actually, um, did an estimate of what it's going to cost and it's going to be about 430,000 over the five-year period. So, um, I just wanted to point out that's an additional 180,000 there that, um, that wasn't, um, presented earlier. So, um, we'll be bringing that forward for approval as well.
Okay. Well, I mean, if, if we, we need to have that. All right. I mean, that's something that we have to have in order to make this program work internally and with our, uh, recipients. And so, you know, I'd be comfortable if you're prepared for that. I'd be comfortable moving that request forward and then backing that out of the total appropriately so that we have clear numbers to work with.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Um, and then some of these projects too, that were, uh, approved during the first round, uh, are either done or, you know, not started and are they going to be able to be complete, um, in, in a timely fashion. Uh, we don't really know, um, the prosecutor's second floor is done and that was, um, a lot cheaper. It ended up being, um, about, uh, you know, 30 some thousand dollars, um, cheaper than what was originally approved. So that's a little bit that can come back into the pot for sure. But yeah, we can take a closer look at some of those projects that have already been approved and possibly reallocate those. I don't know. Just a thought.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'd, I'd be open to, you know, some of those suggestions as well, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
So would it be easier if Commissioner Trask finished scoring and putting a score value to each one of the projects so that we can compare both the, uh, dollars that you, the board would like to appropriate towards each project as well as the, um, as, as well as the, the, the total score associated with each one of the projects?
Well, I'll just say, so just from my perspective and Commissioner, I can, can weigh in on, on kind of how he sees things. I mean, he and I scored it and so we already have where our similarities rank, you know, and so maybe instead of going through the process of just putting a, you know, a, a, a score based on the matrix to it, you know, maybe if Commissioner Trask just went through them and ranked them one to 36 or whatever it is. And then we would be able to go from there as, as Commissioner Netherlands and I look at potentially putting some, some, some numbers to each of the projects that we did score.
Yeah, for myself, you know, it's interesting. We go through this process so that we keep out the personal stuff and it comes together and you know, if we adjusted too much, we did away with all the work that we did on this. There's stuff on the top there that I wouldn't agree with, but it's there and it's there honestly. So I, I, I just accept that and move on, uh, perhaps, you know, we keep the list as it's already set up and we just have conversations with what percentage to do it. And if we really think that it may not be our project, we have that discussion. And decide whether or not to even table that until we find out if there's other monies coming in and stuff. But without a doubt, there's stuff on top. I, I, you know, I obviously didn't score that high, but you know what? It's there. And I would live with that.
Yeah, I, well, I'm hoping that none of us put anything personal or didn't, didn't, didn't score things per, you know, on a personal level. Sorry. Um, but if you want me to, I can go through and finish up my scoring.
To compare apples to apples, and I guess from a personal perspective, I look at it and, and think of, um, you know, projects that might impact individuals within each one of the districts that you represent. So, um, I thought that that was what Commissioner Netherlands was referring to is is when he's looking at some of these projects and seeing things that are within his districts that he'd like to see get completed. He might've scored those higher than, than a commissioner that, uh, had a project within their district that they wanted to see get done. So.
And I agree with that. And, and we know our, you know, our projects a little better than others. I'll be honest with you. I don't know a lot about, uh, the, uh, PUD Alderbrook, uh, Lower Aquifer Project, but, uh, Commissioner Shutey, I think that's his highest rating. That says something to me. It's his area. And he looked at that and he says, this is my number one. I get it. You know, uh, I, I didn't do it that way and I don't think he did it that way either. But when he took the numbers and he put it down with the knowledge he had, that's what it was. And so I, I didn't score it very high, but I don't know the project. So I, uh, again, I assume he knows his project and if it earned its, its rating there, I think we go with what we have here and just talk about the dollar amounts. Just go right down the line and say, you know, hey, uh, do you think we can do this one for this? Or maybe we should give, you know, this amount for, for this one. And just move it around and, and let the dollars fall where they're going to. There's a couple of them here that I wonder about and I don't know, such as, uh, uh, Shelton Spring Gravity Sewer Extension. Is that something that should be in here or was that something should be a percentage that's in here? Do they have other monies that are coming out? You know, I don't know those things and that should be in a discussion where we're talking about how to allocate the dollars, just like we did when it came to, uh, uh, the, uh, Allen Water System and stuff. We knew there was other applications out there. What does it look like? You know, should we wait? Do we put some money off to the side and hold? I think those are good things, but we did this work. We took the time. Uh, it drove me a little crazy doing it because I think I went to Jen and said, I don't agree with some of this stuff, but, uh, it is what it is. And this was the fair playing field.
Yeah, I think what I did is I, I wanted to, like, some of the projects are only, they can only complete them if they're funded. So they were funded in the first part of the ARPA monies. But they don't qualify for anything else. So the second phase would have to come out of, um, the ARPA monies. So it was, um, for me, it was, it was interesting talking to, to folks. And then what I did is I just took my totals and subtracted them from the how much we were getting.
There's nothing wrong with what you did. In my opinion, Commissioner, you did what you thought to break out the dollars. I, I get that because that's, I probably would have appreciated that more, uh, originally if we'd have done it that way. Uh, but we didn't. So that's why I did it in this manner. But I, I think that's how we go with the list and come down and then use the stuff that you learned, you share with us and say, you know what? They need it for the second round of this. And this is how much we need. And that's where we decide, okay, so number three and four, uh, we should put this amount towards it to make sure that they get that and and then, then we have it done.
I like it.
Okay. So we will have Commissioner Trask score and then Commissioner Netherlands and Shutey will put in dollar amounts. Is that right? And then we'll come back, show the results of that and then hopefully make some decisions.
Well, is that what we're doing? Are we going to come back and just take the, the, the list as it's already set forward and start talking about the dollar amounts and the issues we know about it to try and, and fund it accordingly? I guess that's what I'm asking because we, we've already done this.
Yeah, that's up to the commissioners on how you'd like to move forward with that. If you feel like it would be, um, having, having additional information from Commissioner Trask based on how she would score the projects and then Randy, uh, or Commissioner Netherlands and Commissioner Shutey could, could place dollar values next to maybe the, the projects that they've prioritized on their list. Then I think the more information is going to help us in kind of narrowing down where those, what, what projects are really on that final list that we may then have to look at them and say, do we fully fund it or do we give them a partial funding? And I, and that's when the, the information that, um, that Sharon gathered from her discussions on certain projects may be beneficial.
Well, see, I'd rather do that before putting the dollar amount. That's what, that's what I'm saying. I'd rather us go down the list and Sharon tell us what she's learned and that one piques my interest when she, if she knows of one, that $200,000 makes the difference on whether them getting a funder or not. When we're deciding the money, that's a, that's what I would like to, to, to start putting down my dollar amounts. Because that's an important factor that I don't know anything about. Yeah. You know what? We, if we could get that project and they're asking for, you know, 400,000, but she knows that we can get it for two, that helps to, for me to say, then you know what? Let's, let's look at the importance of that.
So what if we do this? What if I send like a, a narrative to Mark and Jen about the, the folks that I spoke to? And then they can share that with, with you? Would that work with, with both of you?
Yeah.
I mean, I think the first one is pretty, is, is, is a good one, right? I mean, in, in terms of, that, that's why we highlighted it to try and show where we have similarities. So both Commissioner Netherlands, Commissioner Shutey scored it fairly high as a project. And then Commissioner Trask actually put dollar values associated with the Mason County Fiber Optic Infrastructure Upgrade. So those are the, 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 something all three commissioners agreed on. So this is, this is a, this is one that's pretty easy to look at and say, I think this one's going to be on our final list. Is it 425? I don't know that dollar amount yet because we need to look at all the other ones. But as you scroll down through your list, Jen, you, you can see that, um, that, so for the buffer sewer extension, again, scored fairly high by, by Commissioner Shutey, Commissioner Netherlands, maybe a little bit lower. Um, and then there's a specific dollar amount there. So we can see where the similarities exist. And Commissioner Trask, is there one that specifically jumps out at you to say this is, this is one that you talked to somebody on that they really did need the money in order to get it done?
Right. The Viewcrest, uh, the PUD one, Viewcrest. That was one that, that would have to be funded out of the, the second half of the ARPA money to complete that project. Yeah, that one.
So are we like looking to move some forward today and others later? Or what's the, what I mean, what's kind of, what's the commission thinking?
Well, since it's myself, I think, you know, I may not agree with them, but we already, we did a prioritization on it with the numbers. I think we should start talking about how much to, to, to give them. Instead of, uh, so we don't just move things around. It's something we can do. You know, I myself, I would love to see the watercraft and stuff and maybe we have uh, some amount, leave a million out for, for things that didn't score that we could just maybe talk about and see the best way to spend that. Or even a million and a half.
The, which, which one commissioner?
I, well, I myself, I love the bear, if you'll notice, uh, that Bearcat one, but I, I have a different understanding of it and the conversations with it. But it's way down there at the bottom. But for myself, again, I think it's just important to focus on the ones that we already did score up at the top, finding out. Finding out how much percentage to get, and maybe the top ten, you know, and trying to leave a. It'd be nice to leave a million or something that we could talk about the smaller ones at the end that we think are important for the area.
Yeah, Mark, how close, so I mean, obviously, I think everybody's, I mean. You you brought up the fiber optic upgrades, um, as being. Something that scored very high for Commissioner Netherland and I is also a priority for Commissioner Trask. How how far off do you think you are from having? That four twenty-five number affirmed up?
That would be a question for TJ, I believe that that was an estimate, but I would have to check with him.
Okay. So, I mean, I, you know, I I would be comfortable, I mean, even if we committed the four twenty-five, that could be. That could be tightened up, I guess, um, you know, over time, so I would be comfortable moving that forward at that funding amount. Uh, if there's consensus.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Then as far as, um. Like, funding the top ten, it's kind of difficult to, without Commissioner Trask's, um, scoring, we don't really have a top. Ten unless you're including the amounts she funded, and so I'm thinking that it would be easier as far as. You know, if we're really gonna take that scoring and use it seriously. It just skews it too much without having her scoring in there, so that's my my opinion.
And and honestly, it wouldn't take me too long to finish my my scoring sheet, I could do that. Um, but then we would still, I would still suggest that we go through and, um, put down. Either amounts that, because some of these amounts that I I have in here are different than what's on. Their ask, if that makes sense, if their their requests. And so, um, if you, uh, let me go, let me go through and and finish the scoring. And then maybe you two could go through and maybe prioritize or put money amounts next to to yours. And that might get us at a, um. We'll get closer.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it in a number of different ways, Commissioner Trask, I I do think that it would be helpful if we had scores from you, uh, because then we can compare apples to apples. And then we could, we could sort them in order, right, I mean, we could start top. Let's say the top seven projects from each commissioner, and we could pick out if there's similarities in all three commissioners, and then we could focus on those ones. You know, we could, we could, yeah, there's a number of different ways, we can look at it from a numbers perspective that may help us. Really narrow down and and look at the individual projects and then just keep a running tally. Of the the little over six million dollars that we have available and where are we at?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I I think, Mark, you're, I think you're tracking the right way with this, so I think having Commissioner Trask's score sheet filled finished. Then sorting the numbers there, and then I think, you know, from that point forward, we'll see those commonalities, and then we can plug in some dollar amounts. Um, you know, based on. You know, some of the, you know, some of the information that, you know, maybe Commissioner Trask gathered, or some of the information that Commissioner Netherland has, you know, on the Bearcat or whatever, you know, and I think. You know, we could just kind of start picking away at it that way and, um. And have a more apples to apples conversation and then plug those dollar numbers in as we identify those commonalities.
Yeah, I really like the idea of being able to 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 satisfy the each individual commissioners, you know, top. Top projects that they have in there, how can we can work together to to get some of those things. Accomplished, and and like you see on this fiber optic one, it's a pretty easy one, because I think all three of you agree that it's important and. Um, so that one's the that's that's cream, right, that's right, it's right at the top, that's easy to pull right off, but. Uh, there's other ones in there that I definitely want to represent, uh, each one, each individual commissioner's priority. And if I get your numbers, Commissioner Trask, then I could actually, I could prioritize your projects. I mean, I can prioritize, I thought we might be able to prioritize them just by kind of highlighting them, but as we look through the list, I think that it's. It's more difficult than what I thought.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, I'll admit, um, I was just jumping the gun. But I will get you my scores and then also share, um, what I found out from from people that I spoke with.
Yeah, that would be great, I think that'd be, that would be very informational for the other commissioners.
Sure.
Sorry, and it would probably be helpful too if, um, Commissioner Shutey or Netherland, if you have, um. Similar types of things you want to share about certain projects that you might know that the other commissioners don't know per se. Okay, great, so, um. So then we'll look forward to putting Sharon's scoring in there and bring that forward. When we get that back.
You know, one of the things Jen, we might be able to do is is present, uh, once we get the commissioners' trust numbers. Um, we could, we could, let's look at a couple of different ways to sort it out, um, and then see if we can find. Ways to utilize the numbers to. Focus our discussion in the future and provide those to the commissioners ahead of the meeting, and they can look at them and be prepared to discuss at our next briefing.
Okay, sounds good, so, and then on the fiber optic, you want to move that forward now, or should should we wait a little bit?
Let's just do it all at one time, if we can.
I think just wait, and you know, that maybe give TJ an opportunity to tighten that number up a little bit, and you know, then we're working with the most up to date information.
Yeah, I agree.
That sounds good to me, okay, great, thank you. Um, the next thing that I have is the the election for the allocation of the USDA Secure Rural Schools and Roads Funding. So, um, we have a a draft resolution and, um. I am proposing that we do, um, the max allocation that we can, which would be, um. Eighty-five percent to Title One Funds, and then eight percent to Title Two and seven percent to Title Three. Um, right now, our allocation is eighty, thirteen, and seven respectively, so, um. Commissioners, if you're okay with this, I will, um. Get this, um. Looked at by legal and move forward to the next meeting.
Can you just talk real quick about what, I mean, it's not a huge change on on Title Two, but that's where, you know, I mean, so. What would look different?
So, um, Title Two is, um. Funding that the USDA keeps for special projects, and I I really don't understand why, um, we put. Thirteen percent in there instead of eight, and then, you know, maxed out our. Um, Title One Funds, um, originally back in twenty thirteen. But yeah, it's not any any money that the county receives, it's federal funding for Title Two. Um, the county receives Title One and Title Three, and then the, you know, it's also gonna help the schools out too, they're gonna receive a little bit higher. Um, allocation if we move from eighty to eighty-five percent on Title One.
Great, okay, yeah, so just, you know, curious about. What that, how that would, you know, look in in the community, so I appreciate that.
So is everybody okay with that? Moving that forward, great, thank you very much, that's all that I have.
Thanks, Jen. So the next item that we have on the list is mine, uh, and this is talking about our lease that we currently have up in the Balfour Landing Commercial Complex. This is for our North Mason Sheriff's Office, and. We've been renting here, I actually had the opportunity to meet Mr. Byerly, uh, last week, which was nice to sit down with him and discuss about how do we move forward. Our lease on this building ends August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, so just here in a couple of weeks. Um, so we need to figure out a transition forward, because, uh, we've been looking at the North Mason Fire District as an. Opportunity to utilize their old administrative building for, um, not only our sheriff's office, but other services that we might want to provide in the north end, I think it's very. Conducive, and there's, there's lots of opportunities that are there for that, um, so how do we transition out of the current lease, because the space is not prepared. Um, and available for the sheriff's office at this point in time. Um, Commissioner Netherland and I actually spoke with, um, the the Fire District and and they were very. Um, I would say, um. Supportive of the county actually utilizing that facility in the future, uh, and they're willing to work with us, um. Not only in terms of of use of the space, uh, but also in assisting us in the. Um, how how we would actually finance any modifications that we would need to make to the facility. Uh, there's a number of ideas that have been thrown out there, uh, and we're ready to start moving forward on it, but it will require a little bit. Of work, uh, and and whether we do that with county forces, with Kelly Fraser's team, or, um, whether we actually have to go out and hire it, it's gonna take us some time to get that done. Uh, so, when you look at the lease for this current facility, there's not a lot of options for us. Um, it's a fairly, it's an interesting lease, um, if we. Were just to continue to occupy the building, um, we would have to pay two two hundred percent of the current base amount. Uh, if we were to go into a month to month option, we would have to pay a hundred and fifty percent of the amount. Of the base amount per month, um, and so I provided you all with the spreadsheet in your materials, um. I'm gonna share my screen here, so. We can take a look at it, because I did have to change one of the numbers, so I actually shared this with, um. Mr. Byerly, and he. Wanted to make sure that, uh, that him and I were on the same page. So can the commissioner see this?
Looks good.
Can you make it a little bit bigger?
I was just thinking that same.
This is the same, this is the same document that's in our packet, correct?
It is, there's a number that I'm gonna point out that is, that is changed a little bit. Is that better, Commissioner Trask?
Sure, that works.
Okay, so you see here that our base lease is, uh, is about two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars a month, and then there's expenses of nine hundred and seventy-six. Um, this expense amount is something that Mr. Byerly has kept pretty consistent throughout the years. Um, for a total monthly cost currently of thirty-seven eighty-eight, he did give us an option. Um, that if we wanted to do an extension of sixteen months, then he would stick with the existing contract. And increase the base lease by four percent, so from the twenty-eight twelve to the twenty-nine twenty-four. If we wanted to go to month to month, then. The four percent still increases because we've actually entered the next year, and you'd pay a hundred and fifty percent on top of that on a month to month basis. Um, so I have have presented this information, or at least provided it to, um. To Mr. Whitehead, uh, and I want to have some discussions with him, he's back in the office this week, so I can actually sit down with him and go over what some of our options are. Uh, but I just wanted to put this before the board to see. If if you were comfortable in moving forward with an extension, now, one of the nice parts about this extension. Is that Mr. Byerly would start advertising the space immediately. Uh, he has had some other individuals that have expressed interest in this lease, and if he was able to, um, find a replacement tenant. And we were to a point on the North Mason Fire Admin Building that we could actually move the sheriff's office into that space. Then we could actually shorten the amount, so we wouldn't have to stay in there for the entire sixteen months.
Yeah, first off, great work on this, I appreciate, you know, you sitting down with the sheriff's office and Mr. Byerly, and he's been a great partner for us. Uh, up in up in North Mason to have that presence there, so I would be supportive of of following your recommendation on the sixteen month lease. Um, the other thing that I do want to say is, you know, at some point. Uh, you know, as we're encumbering county resources to to evaluate and make the changes at the fire station, we we all three need to be involved in that conversation. Um, you know, I I certainly, uh, don't think that we've gone out of bounds at this point, but it seems like there's a lot of conversations and staff. Uh, spending time up there, and I think just being able to have the fire authority, um, you know, meet with us and have those conversations and open. Uh, so that we're all, we're all hearing the same things and committing the county to the same things, I think is gonna be really necessary and helpful going forward, and I think we're quickly getting to that point. Uh, especially as we're talking about, um, you know, making decisions about, uh, encumbering us for additional leases, and just want to make sure that we're all tracked in the same way.
Absolutely, Commissioner Shute, that would be the next step, so this one was kind of a. A time pressing one, um, this August thirtieth date snuck up on me and, uh, and and we were already there, so we needed to to take care of that fairly quickly. Uh, there is still some work that we need to do to officially talk with North Mason and and put into writing. Um, what that lease looks like as far as, uh, how we want to move forward, um, I definitely think that it is. A a great opportunity for the county, and I think when Commissioner Trask and yourself, um, see some of the options that we have, that you would agree with that, but. One hundred percent agree with you that I that we need to actually start working on some of those items, before we start doing any work up in in that area. Uh, definitely would want to have an agreement with North Mason.
And I think I I would, I would like to be included in that the conversations that. I mean, that that are going on, um, I know you've you've updated me on some of them, but. Yeah, I feel like, I feel like I need to to know more.
Yeah, so I think that the first, obviously, the first, um. Priority that we had was, uh, this this, with this lease ending, how do we get the sheriff's office, um, into that facility? And what's the best layout for what that looks like, um, I think that there's some ideas out there, uh, there's also some ideas for other options, I I think you heard. Um, John Taylor mentioned the fact that it would be nice to have a training room up on the north side. Uh, and so there's actually some space for that too, and then what other services does the county or the commissioners or other elected officials within the county? Um, what would they like to have in terms of a presence, uh, to the north side that would really benefit some of our citizens that live up that way, because if they didn't have to travel. You know, thirty to forty-five minutes to come down to the county to receive a specific service, and we could offer that. Um, I think we have a lot of opportunities that are ripe for discussion as we move forward, Commissioner, and so I I wanna, I wanna have those conversations with you. Um, I feel like we have a lot of opportunities to do that, and we should start having those discussions now.
Yeah, anxious to see, to hear what Tim has to say about the 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 lease options also.
Yeah. Is there any other questions, Commissioners?
Mark, just to the other point about, um, services that that could or would be potentially available up there, I think that's, I think that's the right conversation to have. Uh, you know, and I would, I would also encourage you to have, uh, you know, in particular Kel and her building and permitting staff. Put together a plan now that we could do that in our current facility, we don't need to wait. There's office space that would be available up there in our current location, and I I think that would provide a great opportunity to pilot. Those services and, you know, and I I I don't think that we have to wait until we vacate in order to do that, it would give us a great. Data set on what that usage would be, so that we know what kind of resources to deploy.
Yeah, there is some challenges, Commissioner Shute, a little bit, and when it comes to, um. You know, securing the space, right now, the space is is occupied a hundred percent by our sheriff's, uh, office, and so they. Have evidence up there that, I mean, they have good controls over it, they have lockers that they lock up, I don't, I don't foresee a problem with that. Um, there's definitely space there, that's that's nice space, um. To to maybe sit down with some customers and go over plans, or have a have a common meeting space, so. Um, I've introduced this conversation to Kel, uh, but I do need to sit down with her and and talk about what does this look like as we move forward, and. As we see increased development going on up in in the north end of our county. Um, you know, how do how do we, how do we work with those customers that are up there to to provide these services and and an avenue for those discussions to occur that are. Fairly close to the to the actual work site. It could be great, talked with, uh, I also spoke with, um. With David Wyndham a little bit about public health services and and opportunities that are there, and have introduced the topic to other electeds. Uh, about opportunities for, um. Things that I just wanted them to start thinking about it, and in terms of if you had a space, what what would you do? Um, so I will, I will continue to gather that information, and we can take a look at it from a big picture perspective.
And then again, of course, you know, the building's gonna dictate some. And then again, of course, you know, the building is going to dictate some of what we can and cannot do. The only thing that I, I'm aware of is Kelly looking at. Taken the minimums of what, uh, there were discussions to bring forward to the commission to start to have the discussions of what it looks like. How we want to do it from that point on. Uh, there's been no decisions on anything or no, I haven't been pushing on anything in particular. Uh, he'll bring it to us and then we'll start to decide what kind of money or time or effort or usage we want to do. Uh, but he's going to have the shell for us in front of us. To give us, so we can start to have those discussions.
Absolutely.
And you've done a great job, Mark, by the way.
Thank you. So that's all I had for, for this one. Um, and it sounds like the commissioners are comfortable with me moving forward and. Negotiating with Mr. Byerly some type of an extension agreement. I'll work, of course, with, uh, with Mr. Whitehead to make sure that we get it all documented. Um, and, and legal and then we can, uh, then I'll be bringing a forward, um. That, that some, a version of option one in terms of what does that look like, right? And so you can see the language that is in there that. Um, I, I think the part that's most beneficial to us is that, uh, that we may not be locked into a full sixteen months. If Mr. Byerly actually has somebody that would like to utilize that space. We have some requirements in, in the current lease also that require us to do, to bring the building back to its original condition. Um, so if the future renters did not want to leave some of the temporary walls that we've put up, uh, we may need to remove some of those items. So. Um, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ifs out there right now, but, uh, Mr. Byerly's been great to work with and. And, uh, he was, he's actually on vacation right now and so he, as soon as he gets back, we can, we can, um, get this, get this all straightened out.
Great, thanks.
Yeah. So move on to the next item. Nicole, are you, are you here?
Oh, there you are.
Yes, good morning. Um, so, uh, what I put on the agenda is to, um. All right, um, recently in July, I was at the Washington County's Risk Pool and during that conference. Um, coverages and rates for our programs within the pool were already approved for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Um, there are some decisions that do still need to be made. Um, one of them is, um, I'm requesting approval to put on the. Um, next meeting for agenda, um. What is the, to participate in the five million dollars in excess of our twenty million dollar policy? So, um, within the risk pool, we have our twenty million dollar coverage. Um, we are. In the last two years have been one of fourteen counties that have participated in the excess. Um, which puts us at a twenty-five million dollar coverage. Um, so last year we paid ten thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for this excess of five million dollar coverage. It's going to be going up twenty-six percent. Um, we're anticipating paying around, um, fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Um, granted, if there is, um. If there are any other counties that pull out of the fourteen, there may be an increase to it because we do have to have that minimum. Uh, at this time, I believe that there are no other counties that have pulled out. I'm actually correct. I, there are no other counties at this time that have pulled out. So, I mean, we're anticipating that everybody's going to participate again this year.
I was gonna say, I watched the, uh, um. The pool cap that they had.
Yeah.
And it said that our increase would be one point, or well, our, our cost. Would be, uh, one point five, almost one point six million. And forty percent increase. I was, I was intrigued by what is driving the cost increase? Um, and I guess it, it, you know, makes sense to me. So juries are, are paying out a lot more. I think that was the number one reason why the, 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 the cost increase, increased, um. Um, our loss run, social inflation and, um. Then the cost of the self-insurance too.
Yeah, we've seen some twenty-four, twenty-four million dollar, twenty-five million dollar settlements recently. Um, you know, I. I don't, I always think we never have enough insurance. So I mean, for us, having that excess is. A really beneficial thing right now, especially with seeing all the judgments that are coming through. It is a. Crazy time and yes, that, um, that liability is going to increase just a little bit over one point five million. Um, went up forty-three percent from what we paid last year. Um. And so this excess is in addition to that one point five million, we would, this is an individual program that we participate in that not everybody. Has to participate in. And so this would be an additional just under fifteen thousand for this excess of the five million.
Commissioners, uh, one of, some of the reasons why, uh, because I, I, I was at those other meetings, uh, when we had it for the, uh, risk pool. They had people from different areas that came up and spoke and it was quite a difference between how it works in Washington state and how it works elsewhere. Things that are allowed, uh, here are not allowed everywhere else. There are caps that they have elsewhere. One of the biggest things hitting us is, uh, our, our allowance of third party. Uh, representation that they have nothing to win or they, or they have no reason to give in early. Uh, just hang on and for dear life and take as much as they can get at the end instead of settling it. It's, it's kind of sad. Uh, some of these other states literally are shaking their head and can't believe. The stuff we do here in the state and how it works, but it is definitely getting worse and the settlements, those, uh, willing to settle have really changed. They are holding off and, and going to court and then we're given even bigger things at court, uh, even knowing that it's not right. They just. Can't help themselves. It appears in our state.
Yeah, we do have one of the more generous, um, statute of limitations. When I look around, a lot of the other states are like six months and we're sitting at three years for civil claims. Um, and yeah, it's just, it's getting crazier and crazier. The lawsuits are getting, you know, and it's, it's. It's, it's a big, um, big area for a lot of loss. And so, yeah, being able to have as much coverage as we can, I, in my mind is a benefit.
Commissioner Trask and Evelyn, is this an issue that, uh, this type of tort reform that either WASAC or W, uh. CRP is, is talking about, uh, move trying to advance in the legislature or is there any? We just sort of inclined to stick with what, what we're doing versus what other places are doing?
Yeah, so far WASAC hasn't, um, approached it. It's just, it is what it is, kind of, I, I think is their philosophy.
So I do know that, you know, we've had conversations, you know, as, as a risk pool of, you know, potentially bringing that to legislator, just, you know. Um, some, they have torque, what, uh, Commissioner Netherland was talking about, some states, because we had this panel of these executives from other risk pools. From Utah, New Mexico and Colorado and so they have torque caps sometimes. I mean, it's sometimes it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and. And so, I mean, Washington State does not have any torque caps. So there's, you know, talk of, is there something to bring to legislator about starting out with a torque cap? Even if it's something, you know, super high to start out, but is there that possibility for that? It's definitely been a discussion in the. Recent times.
And even in those discussions though, they, they're starting from the position where they may do it, but they feel it's hopeless.
Uh, yeah. Most definitely.
We should, uh, invite, uh, the director to come and speak with us. Uh, it'd be interesting for you to hear some of the things that. He was saying it was, this is not something that you were hearing all these years. This, there was a lot of new stuff this last time. Where the shift is just happening overnight and it's getting out of control.
It is. And I have reached out to our executive director for risk pool and started that conversation about having him come out to Mason County to. Um, you know, present to our electeds and the board and. As to, you know, the program within risk pool and just all the changes and what, um, what the program involves.
I wish I could say that, that, you know, I want to run and say, you know, they're doing it wrong, but that's not how it is. It literally. The whole world is changing on them and it's coming down on all of us. It's. Very much that can be done, uh, on their end that we can expect of them. Because they're taking those hits.
Okay, um, what else, Commissioners? Anything on this? Okay. Are you good, Nicole?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, and thanks Commissioner Netherland for working on that Board of Directors for us. They're going to be visiting here in November, right? Or October?
Yeah, yeah, um, in October. So our fall conference is set over here at the Alderbrook and at the end of the month in October. Um, for our fall conference, yep.
Excellent. Well, shorter trip for you that time, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Great. Mark, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Commissioners, anything else?
Just, uh, on the thing with Jeff, uh, are we recommending to put him on the agenda for appointment to, uh, the PAC? I just wanted to verify that I know what, what I'm saying.
Yeah, I assume that position's still open.
Yeah.
If, if, uh. If it is, Kel can, Kel can bring that forward. I'm fine with that, the point of that.
Okay, so we don't want to, uh, interview, we're just looking to appoint.
I personally don't need to interview Jeff Carey.
Me either.
Um, I think he's the only one that's applied, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, so in Mark's, um, Mark did find that he would make three. The third person in that, um, commissioner district. So just as long as you're all aware of that and are fine with that. Um, he is the only applicant so far and we do still have that open position.
But please, when, uh, the next opening occurs, remember the way it was structured is supposed to go right back to the one that needs the most. And that's how it goes out.
Back to the district that needs the most?
Yes.
Representation, yeah. So I don't think we have much representation in District. Two, is it?
Yeah, we, it ebbs and flows. We've actually have been doing, I think, fairly well on the PAC.
Okay.
For my district and I just think we're, some of those folks cycled off and so.
Yeah.
Well.
Just make sure we advertise it for the district that was supposed to be filled this time. When I did, when the next one comes open.
And I did speak with Mr. Carey about this, um, appointment a while ago. So he knows that it was something that we were discussing and looking into and. Um, definitely think he has the, he has a good brain for it. So it'd be good, good to get him as a member of the team.
Great. Okay. Uh, so Commissioners, we have a, we'll take a short seven minute break and then come back and announce our executive session at noon.